Welcome to the October 23th Planning Board Meeting of the Town of Mount Desert. Bill Hanley is not here today, so as I'm Vice Chair, I'll be chairing this evening's meeting. We have several things on our agenda this evening. The first is, well, the second thing is approval of some meeting minutes from October 9th, 2024.
Before we do that, could we make Dan a voting member of this for this evening?
I would move that.
I'll second that.
Second.
Or third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that for sure gives us a quorum.
Welcome aboard, Dan.
Yes.
So we have meeting minutes from October 9th to approve. I was not in attendance at that meeting.
I'm over approval of the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right now, down to the part of this evening's meeting is a conditional use approval. It's a conditional use approval application number 11-2024. The owner is Lawrence E. Larson of 2016 Trust with the agent of Joshua Burhoe. The location is 8 Spring Lane, Mount Desert, tax map 8 lot 78, Zone Shoreland Residential 5. The purpose, section 6B.8 fences and walls, proposed solid fence exceeding CEO's 6-foot height limitation. And there was a site inspection today at 4:00 PM. Would someone care to give a little summary of the site inspection?
I'd be happy to, but can I tell you about the notice of the...
Oh, yes.
Sorry, hearing for this?
Yes, I skipped it over there.
Right. Well, Kim gave us a little memo last time. You weren't here, and I'm trying to just follow it.
I didn't gift a memo, so I don't have to follow it.
You did. All right, she handed them to everybody. So the planning board meeting was advertised in the Ellsworth American, Mount Desert Islander, apparently the Mid Coast Villager. It was dated Thursday, October 10th, 2024. And butters were notified by a letter of October 4th, and it appears as though... I can read you the name of the butters, or again, there is a list of butters who were notified.
Are there any conflicts of interest on this board?
I do not.
No.
Not to me.
Tell us that. Your site visit?
Site visit, yes. I was there, Adam was there, Dan was there. And it was instructed to stand along the side of the road, waiting for everyone to show up because traffic hurtling down 198 at that point, at this point in time, is really loud. Lots of pickup, dump trucks, lots of traffic just moving at speed, at least at speed. And it was, it was, was loud. I know it's a busy time of the afternoon, but it was loud. We then went to the location where the fence would be, and it was, I don't recall the exact distance from the road it's going to be, but it was, it's, the land drops off the roadbed by a whole bunch of feet, and then levels out. And once it levels out, there's been a path basically cut and a rope put in there to show exactly where the fence would be. Okay, so although the fence is, is at where, they're asking for a total height of 11 feet, which seems very large when you first think about it, it would be three feet off the ground to allow animals to cross underneath it. And because it's, the drop from the roadway is so steep, by the time you're driving along the road, we were told it would be about, I don't know this myself, but it looked, we were told you'd see about six feet of fence from the road. You, there are, there is vegetation there. It won't completely obscure the fence, but it will significantly break up the perception of the fence. And as we get into, we'll see it's going to be made out of cedar, which will break. So, and we walked it, we all walked the line.
There was numerous conifers that would help.
Yeah.
Do, by defense, it wasn't just deciduous in front between the road and the proposed fence location. So that would help.
And it was, I think, really no trees would be removed, maybe very small.
Yeah, they'd already been a bit cut to make the line, but there was not, there were no big trumps that would stump it.
All right. With that, I guess the next thing is to ask you if you'd like to stand up and present anything to the board in addition to the West Wing Packet.
Or sit in for that.
Okay, well, I mean, that certainly sums it up exactly. And just that, part of the reason for it to be so tall, to put it back there where there was a nice lane that no trees need to be removed. Yeah. Yeah, as you know, it's like a dancer.
Okay, yes.
Your map says 37 feet back from the, from the edge of the road. Is that, is that ringing a bell to you?
Yep, although everything along there is exactly where we'd be.
Yeah.
Are there any public present, any public?
I don't see any public.
Well, if you're out there listening and you have something to add, this is your opportunity to speak up, anybody. All right. Would someone like to propose the use of a short form? I would move that one as a short form for this. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, see if I can do this. For. So I've read that portion of it.
And we need to find it complete.
Oh, yes, a preemptory vote for finding it complete. I remember we found the application complete.
Second that.
All those in favor? We will go back to that. So.
No, we have to find it complete, all the information's there, and then we make a motion to approve.
Oh.
And then the discussion afterwards comes between that motion to approve and the final approval vote.
So.
I don't need to interrupt.
A motion to approve?
I'm going to approve the application.
Second.
All those in favor?
No.
And then we try it again.
And now we do the checklist.
Okay, now we do check list, okay. So I'm just going to read this. It says conditional use requested. And there's a little essay. I propose to build a fence designed to reduce traffic noise. The total length would be approximately 160 feet with posts 10 feet apart. The proposed fence will be 11 feet tall with panels that are eight feet tall. Each panel will have three feet underneath to allow wildlife passage. The 11-foot height of the fence is due to the grade of the road. In order to conceal the fence and have it sufficiently set back in the road, the fence would have to be 11 feet tall in order to properly reduce noise. This placement would also allow posts to be set without having to cut trees. I also propose to have the fence as close as possible to the right of way at Spring Lane to increase noise reduction on the property. The primary material is cedar with pressure-treated posts. The fence will be finished on the side facing the road. And the second page is a little schematic showing dimensions. The next page is a sketch of the fence. Get to our application proper here. And we, fences and walls, section 6B.8. Section 6, standards for use permits and approvals, 6A compatibility. It says, see attached blueprint. Visual impact, also see attached photos for visual impact. Proximity to other structures, see attached photo, density of development, see attached, then photo. So here, I'm 6A1 compatibility, see application. 6A2 erosion sedimentation control. It says minimal soil disturbance will occur when installing posts. Removal of sand and sand or gravel, N.A. Tilling of soil, N.A. So I think it would be appropriate to do erosion sediment control, see application. 6A3 highway safety. The proposed installation of the fence will be installed outside of the 33-foot wide main department of transportation right of way. Let's see, application again. And there's sufficient street parking will be available that's not applicable. 6A4 impact on town services, N.A. So it's 6A. 6A. One, two, three.
Little ruler.
Yes. Not applicable, okay. Yeah, that'd be helpful. 6A5 land suitability, it says, see attached. I'm not pretty sure which portion, there's lots of photos.
Well, there is a soil, and then a survey, a description of soil types.
Yeah, and, and
it doesn't show what type of, of these stores it was, but.
That does, it's a lineman, turn, turn green.
Oh, so that's what, I mean, they're covered in a tux, but that's.
That's it.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So, five, the application. Lighting outdoors. And, yep, N.A. is right. Six. And sorry. 6A7 stormwater. Not applicable because the fence is above grade. I just want to see those two. 6A8 vegetation, tree removal near town or state roads. Applicable standard met. Small alders will be removed, but no large trees will be removed to install a fence. See, the application. Dust fumes, vapors, odors, and gases, not applicable. So regarding section 6A. The I guess it'd say.
I move that the application shows the standards have been met.
Okay.
Do we got to do that separately, those separate sections?
I think that would be the.
So I make that motion. I'll second that motion.
Okay, I'll just make, okay, so. Right, standard has been met, but four sections.
Yes.
Which are in a 6A4, 6A. Wait, that's wrong. 6A4, 6A6, 6A7, and 6A9, but you're not applicable.
But some of them.
Should I, should I write that in the bottom? So these are two. Do I have, do I, what do I do? Do we vote on these? Or vote, are you, you've already?
Well, let's, let me just make the motion, remake the motion. I vote that the application shows that the general performance standards of 6A have been met, except for those which are inapplicable, inapplicable, which are 6A4, 6A6, 6A7, and 6A9. I second that motion.
All of you all in favor? Oh, yes. Those in favor? Okay, section 6B.8 fences and walls. 61. Oh, yes, I missed it, so, okay. Sorry, everybody.
I know, it's a good card.
6B.1 agriculture, it says, not, not applicable, and then is all spreading or disposal of manure shall be accomplished in performance with the main guidelines for manure and manure sludge disposal on land, published by the University of Maine and Maine Soil and Water Conservation Commission, July 1972. Okay, so. Yes, that's not on our.
Right, so that's not applicable.
That's not, okay. Excavation other than gravel pits and fill. Not applicable. Then we get to fences and walls. A solid fence as opposed to rail or similar fences or wall more than four feet high in height measured vertically from the ground directly beneath the fence or wall shall require either code enforcement officer permit or conditional use approval. Such fences or walls shall be unduly restrict, shall not unduly restrict scenic views. The structural side of the fence shall not face the public field. A code enforcement officer may be, may issue for solid fences or walls up to six feet in height, provide that a setback of six feet is maintained from roadside walks and rights of way. It does not obstruct highway visibility. See a plan for vegetative screening. And the six-foot setback area is provided that produces a minimum of 20% cover of the fence or wall area. The plan must be implemented and maintained. Fences or walls that do not meet the above criteria shall require conditional use approval of the planning board. This says applicable standard met. The fence above six feet will need conditional use approval.
May I note that I probably should have in the site visit, there are no scenic views that will be interfered with by this fence. And the plan for vegetative screening, as it currently exists, looks to be at least 20% of cover between the road and probably quite a bit more than that, but between the road and the fence.
I would say it's much more than 20%.
Right, but I, I can't put a corner on it, but I think it makes the standard.
So I should do the application. 6B.16 sign regulations, not applicable. Wireless communication facilities. The application says not applicable. Animal husbandry. Applicable, mobile food vendors. Not applicable. Rooming house. Motels. Okay, so.
And just for the record, both a living house and hotels and motels are not applicable, correct?
That's correct.
Have it on the recording.
Yes. So in the section 6B, specific performance standards for activities and land uses. 6B.8 fences and walls, see application, and everything else on this entire list is non-applicable.
Well, I need the findings of fact and conclusions. The findings of fact show that the standards have been met, and, and the conclusions of law show that the standards have been met for fences and walls, and that all of the provisions of 6B are not applicable.
Dan, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold on a minute while I try to write something down here. I have written, standards have been met as to 6B.8 fences and walls. All other performance standards of 6B are not applicable. And is this in the shoreline zoning? Yes, it is, okay. The 6C. Starts off with land use standards. All land use activities from the shoreline zone shall conform with the following provisions if applicable. And the first item says applicable standards met. And we'll go through, we'll go through this. The first one is agriculture, 61, and it's not applicable. 62 archaeological sites, it's an applicable standard net, see attached map, and there is a map of sites.
It just shows there's no known archaeological, archaeological worthy activity. So would that be not applicable?
No, see application.
Yes, they have, they have to demonstrate that.
Yeah. 6C.5 essential services, having to do with limited, limited to public ways, exclusions from RP stream protection, not applicable. Parking areas, not applicable. Rain and freshwater structures. Okay. Roads and driveway. Not. Water quality, not applicable. And that puts the end of C, so findings of fact are that for 6C shoreline zoning standards for review by planning board, 6C.2, see application. And otherwise, all the other sections are not applicable.
I know that the standards for 6C have been, are rather not, are not applicable except for 62 archaeological sites for which the standards have been met.
Second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And section 5.9, sec, conditional use approval. 5.9. In all shoreline areas after the submission of a complete application of the planning board, the board shall approve an application or approve it with conditions if it makes a positive finding based on information presented that, that the proposed use will maintain safe and helpful conditions. And this says, see application. In section 5.9.2, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. See application. 5.9.3 will adequately provide for the disposal of wastewater, not applicable. 5.9.4 will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat, not applicable. 5.9.4.
Can I back up for a second? Yes. They've, they've, they've done, not applicable there. It says our other wildlife habitat, and the point of raising the fence three feet is to allow wildlife to traverse that area. So wouldn't that properly be see application?
I think it could be.
Okay, so.
Not spawning grounds, it's not fish, it's not aquatic life.
I don't think a moose could get underneath it, but I don't think we have any.
So, but bird or the wildlife.
Habitat area is typically along the water, and it's a buffer just along the water.
Really? So it's not that.
This is a shoreline.
It is, but it's beyond, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine. I just want to make sure the right box is, I just want to make sure the right box is checked.
Okay, so I, I'll leave it as not applicable then, okay. 5, 5.9.5 will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters, not applicable. 5.9.6 will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. So see application. It says to designate that it won't. This project won't affect any. This project won't affect any. Historic or archaeological resources. Okay, five point nine point seven will adversely affect existing commercial fishing or maritime activities in shoreline commercial district. Not applicable. Five point nine point eight will avoid problems associated with flood and plain development and use. In compliance with flood plain management ordinance of the town of Mount Desert amended March seventh, two thousand and six. C application, because there's a flood plain.
Probably is, but the fence locations.
Yeah. Five point nine point nine is in conformance with the provisions of section six A, six B, and six C. Standard, this is standard net. I'm going to check that off. So as, as far as five point nine goes here. The, the application is. Has the standard met for five point nine point nine and says C application for five. For five point nine point one, five point nine point two, five point nine point six. And. The best had five point nine point eight. And the other sections are not applicable, five point nine point three, five point nine point four, five point nine point five. And five point nine point seven.
And therefore remove the standards of five point nine command.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
We've gone through the, the checklist and that's all good. Are there going to be any permit condition? Do we want to have a general discussion about the fence in any other fashion?
I would like to make a comment. I'm worried that having a fence that is so much out of compliance. Would set precedent for fences all along the road, up and down. Is it one ninety eight? Could happen and I don't know if that is something that we want. As a town. You know, I understand, you know, having fence in front of the house is, could be something that. Lot of people want. I've had one myself. But visually speaking, I'm not quite sure. If we let one person do it, then we set precedent and it could start having. Great big fences all over. And I'm. Not sure. I don't, I don't mind this fence. I understand why they want it. But it is, and I understand with the slope coming off the road, you know, the fence is put way down below. And so pushing it up in the air, you know, makes it, you know, somewhat more effective. I don't really know how much it's really gonna help to sound. You know, that's something that is not really up to me. But I'm worried about fences being everywhere. And. I don't know how or where to go with this.
I share some of those concerns. I have a buck. And when I was first reading this and thinking about it, I thought, wow, eleven feet. I wouldn't want to set a precedent. But I think this is exactly because of the slope of the land. I think this is distinguishable. I would not want my vote to be perceived as something that is green lighting. Ten, eleven, twelve foot fences everywhere if it were simply a ten eleven foot fence that was in people's face. I think because of that slope, there is. And we were standing down, I mean, we were standing down below head height. In the location with, relative to the surface of the road. Where that was going to be. So for me. What makes it more comfortable, generally agreeing with you, what makes it more comfortable is what will actually be perceived. But I agree generally speaking that, first of all, it may not be that effective as I, you know. Road noise is road noise and more road noise is more road noise, but there is a lot of road noise there. And. I think it's reasonable for property owners to want to do what they can to minimize that right along that busy road. You don't, it's not a place where people are gonna, unless something radically different happens, where people are gonna be pedestrians. It's a, it's basically a highway at this point there. So I think we would have to contextualize this in that way in order to feel okay about it. And that's probably what I would do.
I would like to add, even though my reservations, I do think that this fence will not be very visible. There's good. Plantings along it. I don't know if you'll ever do anymore, but I know how fast things grow up. So. I, I, I see what you say. I don't really think that this one, even though it's so far above. Our standards because of the slope off the road, I don't think it'll be obnoxious to people. But I just kinda, I worry about what's gonna happen next. But I don't think this would necessarily be. An eyesore at all. I think especially once it weathers, I think it will be almost indistinguishable. So. I guess we can.
So then you say no to the eyesores when they come. Like when the eyesores come before us to be considered, then we say.
With my artistic background?
Well, we have at least raised more concerns.
Okay, so we've gotten to the last component of this document that asks if there are any. Permit conditions.
I'm not aware of any.
Just maintenance of the bushes in the front.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have, we plant some more.
Right.
That as a condition.
Just main maintenance of them so that they continue.
Or at least twenty percent screening.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
Twenty percent screening, separate language. All right, does anybody else have anything to contribute before we?
Press play.
And. Do I just start off with, all those in favor of approval? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That makes a.
There you go.
I go five point. So, well, you can submit the application and it's.
An update from the land use advisory group. This work hopefully. We met, we started to, we looked at the, the sole ordinance, we talked about. That's gonna have, probably at the next meeting, we will try to have someone from Climate to Thrive there to help with that discussion. We talked about what the select board was asking us to do in terms of refining what. The role of the, the role of the. Land use advisory board should be, that's gonna be something that bounces back and forth for a while. There are some people who think that we actually need an ordinance review committee. Period. That's much broader than actually just land use issues and then, so that's gonna require. It's gonna come back.
That is separate entity or.
That would, but I think it would be, you, well, it could go a number of different ways. It could, you could say. We want a whole separate committee. I mean, there are some people who suggested you should have different committees at one point. At one of the meetings that we should have, if it's, if it's subdivision, we should have a subdivision review committee and. I asked, well, just how many people do you think there are out there in the town who are willing to staff all these committees? So, and then the subject just come up that there are other ordinances that need to have been worked and they should probably. And that, so maybe it needs to be broadened. I don't know where that's gonna end up, but it's gonna have to be an ongoing dialogue. It's ultimately the select board's decision, how they want to handle that. And opinions or thoughts about all that are always appreciated. When I originally drafted the ideas, it was in response to their request, it was that we would involve, we would look at. At our jurisdiction, be anything that had to do with land use, so that wouldn't necessarily be limited just to the Luso. And then the suggestion that should broaden, so that's ongoing. We also do, this is long work project, which may or may not be done for this next meeting. To redo the definition section of the Luso and the Luso land use tables. And there are several reasons for, and that requires, I don't have them with me, but that requires, is a greatly expanded set of definitions. So basically what we're doing is going through that expanded proposed. For the, we got from Noel, that proposed definitions, figuring out what's different from what's already in the land use ordinance. And at some point, if we decide to put other possible. Land use categories in this ordinance, we have to figure out what zones they're gonna be allowed in or not. One of the goals for this, the goal for this is to make it, it may be actually bigger, but it may be also more comprehensible. So one of the goals, for example, is currently we have residential and then we have recreational and then we have public and then we have commercial. And the goal would be to eliminate those categories and just focus on land uses. And define in which category, what these land uses are that will be allowed. There's a discussion yet to be finished about whether or not we would continue to have provisions that say if. If it's not in, in the, in the, in the defined land uses and you can't do it. Or if it's like something that's already in the land uses and you can convince the, the planning board, then you can do it. There's a couple of different ways to, to handle an expanded land use. So far, we've sort of eliminated putting, uh, piggeries. We've decided that probably doesn't fit and things like that, but it's, we've only gotten to. Cemeteries in our alphabetical list of uses, and so that's something before people's eyes start to glaze over. So that's something that we're just gonna slog away with and then we'll be going back over it. It's a long process and I don't anticipate it would absolutely be done. I still wanna, I'm always eager to hear from the planning board, members of the board as a whole, about things that you think. Should be front burner for action at the next town meeting. So if there's anything that's burning a hole in your conscience, then do let us know. There are some things that will be coming up, there's some straightforward things that need to change as a result of law, statute changes. I think we're gonna start to see some of those, but we only really have a couple more months of meetings before we have to. Start getting things ready for the warrant, so. So it's a slog, I'm making sure that the minutes are, the meetings are at least two hours from this point going forward, so we keep. Moving, I think, I hope that we're gonna get more, I would love to have more folks on this committee. So anybody who's itching to dive right in more comprehensively is welcome to also apply. And also it does require people to do a lot of heavy lifting to read all this stuff before they come to the meeting, so that can, I think, slows down a bit. Anybody have any suggestions or questions? I'd love to hear them, please. And thank you. You're welcome to sit at the table.
There's nothing else on our agenda other than adjournment.
I just wanted to say that, sorry, your meetings in November and December, you only have one meeting those months because of the holidays.
Well, marvelous, thank you.
And do we have anything for the next meeting?
You do, I sent you out the email, I think, sign question for Penny, for. Sorry, marriages, for the hotel or the restaurant, replacement of the sign that faces. The outside, it's the outside sign, dining outside that says restaurant on it, it's a big sign. They want to replace it and. There was discussion last year, through me and Penny, and I brought Bill. And Bill agreed you should come before you guys because they already exceed the sign limitations. And at the time that they were gonna change or modify it, they felt it was in alteration to the. Non-conforming sign because it's, it's big. And you guys can permit over the thirty two square foot minimum sign allowance for a business. But these signs have been there for a long time. There's the main, when the main sale was there and then there's the hotel, so there's the hotel and there's a restaurant. But there, the restaurant is leased by somebody different than owns the hotel. So there's a signage on the front facing coming off of Huntington and, and there's signage facing the water, so. There's quite a good signs for these businesses, so. And typically when you, sorry, not conforming signs, you have to bring them into compliance typically is what the ordinance says, but. That's why she needs to come to you guys.
Let them to be more, as conforming as possible.
That's typically, yeah, you try to not perform. You know, you can allow the severance of the sign in aggregate, but this is, it's like the whole side of the roof, so.
I'm having front problems with my email through the town. Is it Kyle I should talk to? Because for some reason, I'm not, I'm not getting any of these emails. I didn't get notices and I keep getting cut off and I keep getting new.
Yeah, talk to Kyle.
I gotta straighten that out.
Yeah.
Tomorrow. I didn't even know, I said, well, where's Bill?
Yeah, also these, you guys, you guys have personal emails and town emails. Would you prefer all correspondence just to your town one? Because keep in mind, if personal one could get a FOIA.
Yeah. I would.
And these, and these addresses have been, you know, they created for that purpose. Would you prefer that set of us using any, okay.
Yeah.
Because I've been doing the agendas and stuff for the past few months because of Jan being busy with the election. So I just want to make sure, because I know Bill and I, I was sending to his, you know, architect on one because. He always say, I haven't even checked my, you know, emails. And Alan, you really get one because you, you have a personal one. I have Kyle create one for you.
Yeah.
It would, you know, it was. Put the focus of why I just explained.
We can, we can do that.
That's all I had.
I have, I have one, one very, very short thing. The end of the year is coming up and soon the warrant committee will start up and I'm also on that. And it's a real eye opener if you don't know about what the warrant looks at. And if anybody wants to join us, there's an unlimited seating for that committee.
I've given you my child, I'm not gonna.
I did seventeen from the warrant.
That's right. It is good though. It is actually really good.
And with that, I would move for adjournment.
All those in favor?
Aye.